Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, April 22nd regular city council meeting. DeStyes Elliott, our city clerk, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delira.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
So for community announcements that we have tonight, first of all, the Historic Preservation Commission, there's two positions available on the Historic Preservation Commission, which meets the second Monday of each month at 7:30 PM here in the city council chambers. If you're interested in serving on this commission, visit pullman-wa.gov/hpc for more information and application. We have coming up this Saturday, the Palouse Family Fair Walk and Roll, and it's April 26th from 1 PM to 4 PM at the Pullman City Playfields. Come meet friendly local service providers, play games, and score some free and useful goodies. Pullman Parks Recreation, Neil Public Library, Pullman Police Department, and Pullman Fire will be there. It's presented by the Palouse Alliance and Milestone Decisions. We also have an open house that's happening this Saturday at the airport. So it's Airport Open House this Saturday from 11 to 3, where you can learn more about the airport. There'll be some games and activities, and also for you to be able to participate in the direction visioning for the future of the airport. We have an open house coming up for the flood map. Whitman County is hosting a FEMA open house meeting to provide information about the updated flood insurance rate map. Come to the meeting in person on Thursday, May 1st from 6 to 7 PM here in the Pullman City Council chambers, or visit pullman-wa.gov website calendar for more information and the link to join the meeting virtually. Coming up for Parks and Rec, the summer activity guide is out. Registration for summer camps and activities is open. Register now at pullmanparksandrec.com. April Pools Day, come to the Palouse Aquatic Fitness Center on Saturday, April 26th from 2 PM to 5 PM for April Pools Day. Pullman Parks and Rec are teaming up with Washington State Parks Boating and Water Safety Program to teach youth and families the basics of water safety and life jacket safety. Every participant will get a free life jacket. Registration is required. You can register at pullman-wa.gov/apropoolsday. And Fun Fridays, come to the Pullman Aquatic Fitness Center every Friday night in April between 3:30 and 8:00 PM for Fun Fridays, Free for All Ages. From the Neil Public Library, there's going to be a Garden Talk Tuesday, May 6th at 1 PM for Maze Garden Talk Tuesday event called Gardening in Small Spaces. WSU master gardener and retired dietitian Mary Jo Marises, Marise, I believe, will teach you how to use different containers and raised beds to produce a plentiful garden and showcase your plants. No registration is needed. And you can see a listing of other community events. Visit the city's tourism page at visit-pullman.com/events. The next item up on our agenda is a non-agenda item, related community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for public comment to bring comments to the attention of the elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments, concerns, or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action on this agenda. Final action items include confirmation appointments, consent agendas, regular agenda items. This agenda item is for comments, is not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments are to be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body. No comments should be directed to an individual council member. If anybody would like to provide public comments now at this time on non-agenda item-related community comments, if you can please come forward. Anyone who would like, and this would be a time, anyone who would like to provide a comment related to any of our presentations and speakers, this would be that time also. So if someone would like to provide a public comment, now would be that time. And if so, please come forward, and we'll have two minutes for each person. And please do, if you can sign in when you're done, just so for those that are taking minutes, that we get your name accurate in the minutes. Thank you, please.
Good evening, Bobby Ryder, Downtown Pullman Association, here with a little update of what's been going on. Saturday, April 11th, DPA participated in the WSU QB Classic. We were on hole number eight, and it was quite an event, actually. We also were quite successful that evening with the Crimson and Gray Pub Crawl. Businesses reported that they were very happy with the event, so go Cougs. On Friday, April 18th, we had our annual meeting, and that was held at the Lumber Yard. Two members were voted for reappointment to the DPA Board of Directors, Molly Golden as the Vice President and Tom Handy as our Treasurer. And two new people were voted onto the board, Mackenzie Brummett from SCL as an at-large member, and Garth Mater as downtown property owner. On Saturday, April 19th, the Bangladesh New Year, Sri Lanka, Nepal, India, all of them separate the New Year at the same time, and that was at the Pine Street Plaza. By revenues, it was estimated there were about 200 in attendance at that event, and Thomas Hammer was very happy because they sold a lot of coffee that day, too. At the same time, the WSU Car Show was small but enthusiastic and included a cruise down Main Street. On the 16th of Saturday, excuse me, oh yeah, coming up on Saturday, the 26th, is Blooms and Toons, and there will be music, 10 acts, and six locations, 40 businesses participating, and 40 businesses will be participating in the umbrella art and the airwalk. And then finally, Saturday, May 17th, the downtown artists are invited to register because we're going to have, we're bringing the art walk back, and you can go to downtownpullman.org, and that's where you can register. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
Other people were signing up before me.
You don't have to go in the order of the sign up.
My name's John Swenson. What I'd like to do is give a little preface before the property tax discussion later about the relevant state laws associated with what the county assessor needs to do. So in RCW 84.40.030, it says, quote, "All property must be valued at 100% of its true and fair value in money and assessed on the same basis unless specifically provided otherwise by law," end quote. That's the first one. And the second one is RCW 84.41.030, and it says, quote, "Each county assessor must maintain an active and systematic program of revaluation on a continuous basis. All taxable real property within a county must be revalued annually, and all taxable real property within a county must be physically inspected at least once every six years," end quote. So the two requirements are 100% of value, the other one is that they all have to be revalued annually to that 100% value, and then a physical inspection every six years to sort of make up if there's any discrepancies about condition, new add-ons, maybe things that weren't permitted. And so that's the statutory law. The case law is consistently found in favor of the taxpayer when this sort of thing has happened. There's multiple cases both in the United States Supreme Court, as well as in the Washington State Supreme Court. And there's one key case that everybody cites, and it says, quote, "The conclusion is based on the principle that where it is impossible to secure both the standard of the true value and the uniformity and equality required by law, the latter requirement is to be preferred as the just and ultimate purpose of the law." So what has happened is Pullman has been revalued, and the rest of the county had not, or at least not up to the same value, and it's placing an undue tax burden on the citizens of Pullman. And so I just want you to keep those two laws in mind as you listen to the presentation today.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment? If you have a handout, please give it to the city clerk, and she'll distribute. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, my name is Emily, and this is Catherine Hubbard, and our classmate Sophia Reeves. Thank you for your time tonight. We're students from WSU, and we're presenting on behalf of the Disability Action Center Northwest, and for our community, who are a community partner for our Capstone Service Learning Project.
So what we were tasked with through the Disability Action Center was to make the Harrison Taunt Lot, which is right behind Rose Hours, more accessible for the community and neighborhood. After going and putting up flyers, 60% of those who filled out our flyer, as it shows on this pamphlet, believed that that lot was not accessible for all. And going there, we realized there was three major things that we wanted to try fixing. One was the slope to get to the park. ADA requirement says that for every foot of depth, or for every foot, there should be max a three-inch decline, and it does not meet that requirement, as well as there is a ramp to go into the park, but not to get out. So for those with children with mobility devices, they cannot safely exit with their child, which causes concern. And the last one we wanted to address was to make sure that there was an ADA accessible parking space right next to the park, so that it would be easier for those to access in and out of.
And then for the cost and the timeline, we've designed our recommendations to be very budget-friendly, as much as, you know, you can. So for the full set of improvements that we're proposing, including the compacted gravel path, the accessible parking space, and the ADA-compliant plastic ramps, the cost estimated from our research should be between like $4,000 to $12,000. And then using existing materials and potentially in-house labor, it should be roughly under $6,000 to $7,000. And then in terms of timeline, this should only take just a few weeks, especially if those materials and labor is on hand. And then, yeah, we just want to emphasize that for a really small investment, this will have a long-term impact on the community to make it like equal access and, you know, accessible for all.
Great, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person?
Good evening, I'm Natalie Heron, and I do reside in Pullman. We bought a house back in 2022. I am unprepared, and I usually provide a speech due to my accent. One thing is that I want to second John Swenson, and he eloquently expressed it. I am one of the Pullman owners that was affected by those property taxes and tax burden. We did our research when we bought, so this was totally an unwelcome event for us to have our taxes doubled. Anyhow, I'm not prepared to really speak about that, but I would like you to consider the knowledge of John Swenson when he expresses those. Second of all, I want to also address the fact of the public bus transportation. So where we live on Davis Way, my son, who is now a sophomore in high school, has not been able to have transportation for two years, or he can take a bus, a city bus, for an hour and a half, or an hour and 20 minutes one way, and then the way back is another hour and 20 minutes. I've already addressed all this with the school district many times. I've spoken publicly, and unfortunately for us, as we are teaching him to drive, we will not be the beneficiary of all my hard work and the fact that I speak up and try to make Pullman a better place, which is also what I want you to hear when I'm speaking, is we are here to live in a small community. We come from many places around the world. My husband is American, but we are here because we want to be a city. We want to be welcomed. We don't want to have to fight about buses. We don't want to have to fight about taxation. This is putting a fracture in our community when some of us are trying to make this city a great place to live, and we want Pullman to hear this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person? Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment?
My name is Cherie Collins, and I live in Pullman. I've lived here a very long time, worked at the university. Our pay raises do not account quite to our tax that we just got, which was over $1,000 a year increase. You know, we have my income, and my husband is disabled, and we just don't have a way to really pay for that. I appreciate John Swenson very much for coming forward, and other homes in our area were assessed at the same value they were, you know, 10 years ago. And one home in particular is approximately $70,000 less than mine for the assessment, which it's three doors up the street and across the street. I think that these valuations should have been done as a whole. When I complained to the assessor, there is no justification for how they did this. I call it Smith &amp; Wesson, it's really called Marshall &amp; Swift. They sent me the little piece of paper of Marshall &amp; Swift, where they just put in a calculation of how many square footage. And then there was two other items on there, oh, how many bedrooms and how many bathrooms. So it auto-calculates, and that's what happens, but there's also a little spot there for condition. There's also another spot there for age of home. My home is 41 years old. My assessment is based on it being 21 years old. My assessment was done with a comparison of three homes that sold in our area that was during COVID, when home prices were very much up there. And I've watched a lot of the real estate in Pullman now go on the market. If you notice College Hill, there's a lot for sale. If you notice Golden Hills, there's a lot for sale. If you notice around Pullman, there's a large number of homes for sale, since these assessments have come in.
So your time is up, so thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide? We welcome you back at another time. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Next up is city council member comments, and with that, I'll start with council member Fagerin.
Yeah, just wanted to say one thank you to Mella and those involved in the Mangali New Year Fest. The food was delicious, and I'm looking forward to more events in Pine Street Plaza.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize our library director, Dan Owens, is leaving effective, his last day will be May 29th, and I'm sure there'll be something there at the library. I'd like to just, as a community, just recognize him and thank him for helping the, under his direction, the library's become more of a community center with an 86% increase in program attendance. And also, the checkouts did increase a lot during his tenure as director as well. And he and his staff have done a really fine job at the library, and we wish him well. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
No comment.
Councilmember Guido?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I want to let the council know and the public know as we approach filing time for our renewal, or for election rather, of this seat in particular, and I think there's two other council members that are up for election this November, and our filing date is approaching. I represent Ward III, but after some careful consideration, I have decided not to run again. So I wanted to let folks know, and am doing so because I am finding that I have other priorities and other efforts that are taking a lot of my time, and I want to do this job justice. And I would still like to participate in the housing efforts that I hope the city council will continue to look at and advance, and participate in some way. I do hope that our team, the housing group, will come forward. This is what we're working on with a plan for creating more accessible housing in Pullman and homeownership. So I would very much appreciate my colleagues looking at that closely and doing what they can to advance that after a lot of hard work from citizens. So I think this is a chance to participate in local government and in democracy, and for other people to step up to the plate. So I want to thank you for the confidence that you had in me, to elect me to begin with.
Thank you. Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Well, I'm a little surprised because I'll miss you. Those who don't know, councilmember Guido has been the pivotal role in a number, played the pivotal role in a number of efforts in our city, not only the housing, but also the Whitman Recovery Community Center. So we're definitely going to miss you. On that topic, I would like to say I appreciated everyone who did show up for the mental health walk, and I see Mr. Leeper right here, so appreciate, you're always a great MC. So that was a great event. There are a few things that I just wanted to say, and I'll try and keep them very brief. The Mila event was amazing. You could see it, I appreciate hearing about that. Modern Plants Man also had a private event that looked like a lot of fun, and I think it's really, really important to recognize the efforts of Mauro Ramirez and OMT up at WSU, who did rolling through the Palouse. I know he worked very closely with councilmember Delira, and had roped in a couple of us, including councilmember Fagerin as well. It was a phenomenal event, especially for a first-time event, and WSU students bringing an event downtown. I don't think people quite understand how monumental that is. It was really cool, really great to see all the awesome cars that were down there, and there were quite a few people, I would say, yeah, over 20, 30 people that were there in attendance, a lot of them were WSU, and you could see members of OMT at different areas in Pullman, holding up signs to get people down there. That was really, really awesome to see. So moving on, I would like to also echo what has already been mentioned. Dan Owens was a phenomenal, is, he's still going to be here for a little bit, is a phenomenal library director. He stepped into some big shoes and just did really, really well. He's been here since 2015, served as director since 2022, and it's been, we're going to miss him, but he's on to good things as well, and just want to say we'll miss him. Marie Demkowski also will be moving on. 18 years with the chamber, 14 years as executive director. She has turned the chamber into a powerhouse, and I'm sure Alexis Foran will do a great job, but that is another person we will sorely, sorely miss. Lastly, I would just like to say something, as councilmember Guido mentioned, election season will be coming along. I had the extreme pleasure to somewhat crash a conference this last weekend, the Western Political Science Association Conference, and listened to a roundtable of a decade of research on civil discourse put on by Francis Benjamin, Dr. Nicholas Lovarch, and several others. And it included past Secretary of State Sam Reed and Kim Wyman, among others. It spoke to a very concerning trend, and while I don't know all the details, I think it is something, I haven't fleshed this out, but maybe at a future council meeting to have a presentation on. I haven't asked Francis, so this is kind of taking him by surprise, but we're seeing a very surprising trend, and I'm only giving the brief overview of not only federal, but also state-facing challenges in civility. We've seen some of that begin in local. Pullman is not as bad, from what I understand, as others. But I feel it's important for everyone who's listening, and everyone who's, I appreciate everyone being involved here, to understand, we represent everyone. It doesn't matter if you're Democrat, Republican, Conservative, Liberal, it doesn't matter if you vote or don't vote, if you're independent or too young to vote. We have to keep all of, everyone in mind when we make decisions. And whoever decides to run for the positions, I would encourage to keep that in mind. We all come from different backgrounds. We all have our own views, but when we are up here, it's what's best for the community that's the most important. And I hope into the future, we can keep that in mind and continue having a balanced view. I also think it's important for everybody to understand, we are all friends and neighbors. Everybody up here is either a daughter, a son, mother, father, grandmother, grandfather. So when we discuss, when we have discourse, it's really, really important to see each other as friends. We may have differences in view, but we all want what's best for the community, whether that's WSU, whether that's longtime residents. So just wanted to mention that. I apologize for taking so much time, Ms. Mayor.
Councilmember Delira?
I would like to thank the Whitman County for supporting COSS in their pursuit of the Colfax Albion Pullman Moscow Bus Routes with their recent financial pledge. So looking forward to using the bus routes, and I know it will greatly benefit our Pullman community and the surrounding region. And I also think it's important to be in the know of future developments of this project. So I will be making an agenda request to invite COSS to provide an update sometime in the summer on their regional transit efforts, as well as get an overview of the resources that they provide for the community, since they do a lot more than just transportation. They also provide meals for seniors and other nutrition programs, and I did check in with them to get their blessing, to see if they would be interested in coming back again for a more thorough presentation, and they are, and I am also interested in having them back, too. So when the time comes, I'll be making that request. And again, thank you Rebecca Couch from the RTPO, and Paige and Ali. And again, thank you Rebecca Couch from the RTPO and Paige and Ali from Coast for coming to the last city council meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Gaither?
No comment.
So for mayor comments, I've had two of them. One is, I enjoyed last night meeting with Okinawan delegation that's here. This is, met actually with one of the mayors, along with some others, as a part of the delegation. This is the precursor for a number of Okinawan students that come in the summertime in order to learn English. And so it was a great, great conversation with them, and I definitely enjoyed that. The second thing is, there is, there's a number of events that are happening. One event that's also happening this weekend is the Pullman Depot and Heritage Center. They're starting their quilt show. And I actually have the opportunity of doing the keynote talk on the legacy of quilting Saturday at 10:00 a.m. So if you're interested in quilting as a legacy, that's another talk that I'll be doing. With that, the next item that we have up is city council future agenda item and mayor's future agenda item requests. One that I do have, and this is just, at the last council meeting, we asked to move to council meetings starting at 5:30. We did not get it onto the agenda, so you're seeing it missing from the agenda. So what's going to happen is, the next council meeting will actually call a special meeting that's at 5:30. And then at that meeting is where it'll be in the agenda for actually approving for going forward, being 5:30. I just wanted to communicate that in the, Megan, you're fine. In the midst of it, we just didn't get that part into the agenda. Just wanted to let you know for that. Is there anyone else that has any future agenda item requests? Councilmember Delira?
Yeah, I would like to invite Coast to come back and give us a midsummer update on the Colfax Albion Pullman Moscow bus routes, as well as an overview of their services.
And so it'll be based on where we have availability, and we have a number of presentations. So we'll need to see when we can fit them in. But for Coast, is there a second?
I'll second have a quest.
Second one for that.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I'm not sure exactly how this, because I did drop it on you, and I apologize for that. I would like to see if you could share some of your knowledge on civility and politics and trends, especially as we're starting to face into the new year and election time. I think it would be very helpful for all of us to see that. I haven't asked anybody if they'll second that. This was on kind of last minute, as I was thinking about the trip and politics and so on, so.
Do I, so is there a second requesting this, first of all? I have a second? Okay. I will work with staff to come up, whether it's something that is at a council meeting or in another way to be able to provide that for you? Yes?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other future agenda item requests? Seeing none, we move on to community comments on final action items for the agenda. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of the elected officials on any agenda item that the city council will take final action item at this meeting. Includes items where public, excluding items where public comment was previously accepted. This exclusion attends to private, to prior public hearings. Final action items include confirmation appointments, consent agenda, and regular agenda items. This agenda item for comments is not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments be directed to the mayor and city councils of body. No comments should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who would like to provide community comments on any final agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close that. Next up is confirmation of appointments. And before the council, in your package, you have where I've recommended David Drumhiller for the Civil Service Commission. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? So all those in favor of approving David Drumhiller to the Civil Service Commission with a term expiring December 30th, 2031? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up for presentations, and so this first one is Whitman County's assessor's office. And with that, we have the assessor, Raylene Flodeen. And I will, do you have, I don't know if you have a, do you have a presentation or are you just talking?
Just talking.
Just talking. I didn't get a chance to ask staff that question. I apologize. And I know you've heard some, some comments from, from the community related to it, too. So with that, I give you the floor.
Very nice to see all of you. I am your Whitman County Assessor, Rayleigh Flodeen. I was appointed to fill Robin Jones's term in 2021, when we unfortunately lost her, and elected in '23 for a four-year term. Excuse me, and I'm recovering from the cold everybody had. You asked me to come in today, Councilmember Fajerin and Councilmember Delira. Thank you very much. Weller, excuse me. I spoke to Councilmember Delira about taxes, to talk about the property taxation, the assessments in Pullman, what's going on with all of that. I feel like this is a good question and answer time, but I'll give you as brief as I can make it summary of what the assessor's office is doing right now. You heard already RCW 8440030. That is RCW that dictates where to be at 100% of market value in our assessments. There's also RCW dictating that we're to yearly reevaluate all property in the entire county. There is a six-year plan that's required from assessor's offices to Department of Revenue. That six-year plan divides the county into one-sixth, assigns each of that section to be physically inspected, with the intention of statistically updating all those areas not in physical inspection. Now, going back to 19, 2019, that was the first year of the six-year plan for that six-year section. That was one-half of Pullman. Then you went through five more years before the other half of Pullman was physically inspected. The statistical updates were not being done by our office. When I came in, you know, it takes time to learn a process like this, a position like this. I didn't realize this wasn't happening, not until we got to the second half of Pullman five years later. And low and behold, you have a big difference in the market and a big difference when none of those values have changed. So we actually rewrote our six-year plan. 2024 was the last year of that six-year plan. 2025 is the first year of the new six-year plan. We are no longer dividing Pullman. Pullman will be all done in one year. Our statistical updates are being done. We started that last year. We looked at the entire county, noticed that the entire county needed at the very least a 15% increase. Now, that's a big increase, especially in these smaller communities. It isn't a big increase when you look at what Pullman increased. We decided, because of the dramatic increase in Pullman, we would leave the half of Pullman that we did the first year alone, bring the other half of Pullman up to meet that. We're looking at about 85% of market right now. I today pulled some numbers. I pulled one house that I could find that sold quite a few times over the years. This home was built in 2020, sorry, 2012. It didn't go on the tax roll until 2014. It went on the tax roll at $430,000. It sold that year for $430,000. It sold in 2019 for $570,000. It sold in 2020 for $580,000. It sold in 2022 for $750,000. And it sold again in 2025 for $759,000. Now, when we put that on the tax roll at $431,000, it stayed at that $430,000 assessed value until 2023, and we brought it up to 85% of market, so $625,000, $630,000. That is a large jump in assessment, but an even larger jump in market. And that is the primary reason you see so many assessments jumping so high. You went from a $430,000 house being sold to $759,000 in just a very short time. The other part of property taxes that didn't get discussed earlier, that I think is very, very critical for you guys to understand, is the levy rates. When you are paying taxes in the city of Pullman, you're not just paying the city, you're paying the city, the library, metro parks, the county. You've got EMS, you've got school districts, you've got hospital districts. You're paying a lot of cumulative levy rates. And all of those levy needs for the special purpose taxing districts come together to make the levy rate. The levy rate's divided by the assessed value of the district on the whole, so that it's evenly spread out amongst all the taxpayers. In Pullman, 10 years ago, our assessed value was about $1 billion, 2 million. It is now $2 billion, 3 million, in 10 years' growth. That includes exempt properties. So that includes your hospital being built, that includes your city hall being updated, all of the additional value to the tax roll. So that's quite a bit of growth. We have, in the work that we've been doing in the last two years, we have seen the levy rate come down. So when you have your assessed value going up, your levy rate is going to come down. It's not a perfect teeter-totter yet, but it is a bit of a teeter-totter. And this is a lot of information that I've just thrown at you guys, and I know you have a lot of questions. And I wouldn't like to take up any more time trying to explain all the in and out. I'd really like to open it up for any questions that you might have.
Okay. So questions among, from the council members. And since Councilmember Fajerin, you initially requested this, I'll let you have the first question.
Thank you, Assessor Flodeen, especially in your transparency and meeting with us to really get into details about the numbers. For somebody who's not a property owner, that was extremely important to understand just how, what the problem is, basically, that we're trying to solve here. And we have a lot of people in the audience, and we got a lot of questions about this for the past year. And so just, I want to repeat it back to myself, so I can make it as simple as possible for, to describe the problem here. Property value has not been evaluated as it should be for the past, how many years? And now this is an attempt in order to catch up with, with what it needs to be. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to know if you would be able to speak a little bit about the Board of Equalization and the No Action Plan that they committed to when the Board of Department of Revenue and the Department of Revenue Communication? Are you able to speak to that at all?
Absolutely. We reached out to the Department of Revenue, the assessor's office, and Board of Equalization in regards to the concerns with Pullman being split in half and that not seeming fair. And it wasn't. Department of Revenue listened to all of our concerns, you know, what are we to do? We're a very small office. There are 40,000 parcels in Whitman County, and there is no way for this very small office to go and redo everything when we've already, you know, sent tax statements out. We're another year into the process at this point. To go back and redo the original year, that's an error, really looks like going back and redoing the last 18 to 25 years. This has been going on for a very long time. It just is so much more noticeable now with the high costs of homes. Department of Revenue gave us three options. By us, I mean Board of Equalization, but I was there to listen. They said we can either redo everything for that year and everything for the year that we're currently in. That would have meant a staff of about 65 to 70 employees, some of those being our own, some of those being paid outsiders, some of those being from Department of Revenue. The expense alone of bringing in that number of staff members to redo an entire tax roll, I can't even fathom it, actually. The other option was to try to, you know, balance it the way we actually are, which is bring up one half, bring up the other half, leave everybody alone on the first half till you get to the same level, and then bring everybody up incrementally in our statistical approach. That's actually what we're doing, and that's being facilitated in my office. And the Board of Equalization, they listened to all of this, and they felt that we are already making amends with the unfair taxation. So they decided not to bring in a huge staff and redo an entire tax year and redo statements, which would be astronomical as well. They decided to wait and see if it leveled out. They are independent from the assessor's office. They make their own decisions, and that's what they decided to do.
Thank you for that explanation. Just for the folks listening and the audience, the Board of Equalization, does that, who makes up the Board of Equalization? Is it mostly the county commissioners?
It is the county commissioners. They can choose to appoint other entities to the Board of Equalization, but it has traditionally in our county been the commissioners.
Thank you for answering those questions.
The second person was Councilmember Weller. Did you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Assessor Flodeen, for being here. I tend to be a little bit less polished than, than Councilmember Fajerin. And I tend to feel, you know, quite a bit, probably not the best position for me to be in, huh? You know, we've heard, here's a challenge. I understand it's less of questions. You have been put in a difficult position. And from the state and from, as I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, just the history of what's gone on. So you've been placed in a, in this kind of rock and a hard place. And I'm sure you've heard more than your fair share of negative comments, of blowback for what you've had to do for your job to bring us up to compliance. I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong. We have as well. It's painful to hear from a mom today with six kids, who's every day into work trying to just make ends meet. And her house is reassessed. And this place where her kids have grown up, it's questionable if she's even going to be able to remain in that home. I think it's even more difficult for a lot of people in Pullman to understand where, where did this come from, you know? Why did it happen? And so I appreciate it. You, in all honesty, didn't, didn't need to come here. You could have said, you know what? I'm too busy to do this. But you came. You've been very transparent about what's gone on, at least from my knowledge. We have heard from different citizens regarding these and concerns and complaints. And I'm sure you have as well. So I don't really know that there's so much that I can ask to provide mercy for our homeowners. I don't know how many homes are going to go up for sale now. I don't know how many families are going to have to move. And I appreciate Councilmember Fajerin trying to create clarity. For me, I'm trying to create some sense of what often gets lost in the numbers is the emotional impact. And the separation from, how do we, what's the next step? How do we do this? So I guess the only thing I can ask, and inside, it tears me up, because I, I actually rent. So of course, those prices will go up and so on and so forth. How do we avoid this in the future, one? And two, are there any other counties facing similar situations? And it, for me, I'm trying to balance, you know, the importance and the feelings of the community versus what I understand you have also had to, that has been put on your shoulders, and I know it's got to be challenging. Can you, can you answer? Can you, can you answer, how do we avoid this in the future? Are there any other situation, or any other places facing the same situation in Washington? And how many people are in your department that are helping you with this?
Sure. The way we avoid this in the future is by getting up to speed as quickly as we can and keeping it where it's supposed to be. Now, if the market goes up, if we're up to speed, we can go up with the market. If the market goes down, we can go down with the market. We have done training, we are preparing, we are monitoring. We are bound by some specific timelines within the year, so any market adjustments have to be accounted for by June 1st. This June 1st will be for 2026's assessment. The change of value notices have to go out. That is, one, the lock of the roll, and two, the opportunity for any homeowner or property owner to come talk to us about their value. They have 30 days from the date of notice, they can come in and talk to us if we have made a Scrivener's error, or they feel that is just extremely high and we need to have a discussion. If they need to provide their income statements because they have rental properties, that is the opportunity to do that. And, and we can adjust any way we can see fit. If you have a fee appraisal for your home that was done in the last year or two, and it says, hey, my home's worth 500,000, you have it on the tax roll for 700,000, we can certainly honor that. We're doing mass appraisal, we're looking at everybody. A fee appraiser is looking at that specific property and much more data, and we can honor that information in that time period. And we're prepared to do that. I think that's how we're going to keep this dramatic jump from happening going forward. It is going to happen in the rest of our communities over the next six years, but what you'll see is, you know, physical inspection will get you caught up, and the statistical will keep you caught up. And that is, that is our path going forward. We do have a very small staff. I run all of our statistical information. I love Excel. If you have Excel spreadsheets, want to send them to me, love them. We have two accredited real property appraisers. One of our real property appraisers is also a commercial appraiser. She's the one that is primarily inputting things like all the income statements for rental properties. We have one GIS tech. If you have looked on our GIS page, I'm sure you've seen the pink parcels, as we call them. He's verifying those parcels, making sure they match up to what we have in the tax roll, correcting ownerships, property lines as we go forward. And then we have a segregation clerk, and she does all the sales processing, boundary line adjustments, things like that. And then I have an admin assistant, and she's part-time, she's wonderful. She actually manages, my favorite program that we manage, the number one, we get lots of gold stars for, and that's our senior exemption program. I hope that you've all heard of this. So it's seniors, disabled people, or veterans with a disability rating of 80% or higher. We can reduce their taxes to one of three levels. In some cases, on very low assessments, they may not pay any taxes. And we have been going out and promoting this. We thought everybody knew. Apparently, everybody didn't, so we've been going to senior lunches and community events, trying to get the word out there that we actually have this program that can help. I know I've personally put on, in the last month, probably 30 seniors onto the program, which is a lot compared to, you know, historically, we've put a few on every year or taken a few off. We have had a lot of seniors come onto the program. The other question you asked is, are other counties facing this, this similar situation? And they very much are. Assotin County, they're our neighbor. They're in the same exact boat that we're in. They're probably not as far forward in the repair of the boat as we are, but just as many taxpayer phone calls, just as much emotion. We talk about that in Assessor Group a lot. There are a lot of counties in the same boat. Benton County has always kind of been my superhero county. They were able to raise their ratio of assessments to market to like 90% about six years ago. They're much closer to us with their ratio now. We're at 73. I believe they were at roughly 82. Don't quote me on that, because I'd have to go look it up. But even they're having problems keeping their assessments up. And they're a much larger staff, a much larger county than we are.
Yeah, I have a quick question, and thanks for coming to speak with us. Could you elaborate more on where people who are eligible could find more information on the property tax and exemption form?
Absolutely. The exemption forms are available on our website. You're welcome to call us. We will work with you on mailing them, emailing them, dropping them off if we can reach you. We have a lot of seniors that like to do everything on paper. They come visit our office. We are open nine to four for public hours. We will help you go through the paperwork, we'll look at everything you have to submit, make sure we can get you into that program. There are some wiggle rooms, like, we'll talk to you, what do you pay out of pocket for prescriptions, things like that. We'll work through all of that with you, whether it's in person, on the phone, online. You can also get them from Department of Revenue. We do use all of Department of Revenue's forms. On our website, we have other forms that are also applicable. They talk about the levy rates, they talk about property tax for homeowners, personal property tax for owners. They're very, very informational, which is partly why I didn't bring you a handout. Everything is available readily on our webpage.
Councilmember Guido?
Thank you for coming. I know it's not easy to face folks that are upset about this, and we've had to face quite a few people who are telling their personal stories that they maybe are renters. I'm hearing it more on the rental side, that it's trickling down, and that they can't afford that because their landlords and their property owners are passing that on to them. Much like, I'm going to get political here, but to me, it's just like tariffs. It's a tax on people. And we just need to understand that those are the repercussions. And while I, I get it, that, that you're in a tough place, can't believe it has happened, that this went on for years without anybody noticing it, really, really hard to accept. But I worry about the continued cost of living. And people want Pullman to be small, and to stay small, and not have all those issues. Well, guess what? We have those issues. And we have to deal with them. So we can say, you know, this doesn't affect us, but it's affecting all of us, whether you're a renter or a homeowner. And if we want to maintain our little, small Pullman way of life, it's going to take a community and helping each other, because I guarantee you, there will be some people who don't have housing and are going to be looking for a place to stay as a result of this and some other things that are coming down the pike. So all I'm saying is, get ready.
Before I go to those that would be the second time around, Tremaine, do you have any questions? So Tremaine?
I do, I do, and thank you. And thank you for this presentation, by the way. I have two clarifying questions, if that's okay, just, I think that will help the audience. One, did you say that you had, that you currently have two full-time appraisal staff, one of which required, is tasked with both residential and commercial appraisals? If so, that sounds like you're under some significant resource constraints, and that could be an issue. Two, clarifying, the, the second clarifying question is, is it required by law for every property to be brought to 100% market value each year? And then I have a second question, but I would like those, for those two clarifying questions to, to, to get answered first.
Absolutely. We do have two accredited appraisers on staff. We have other staff members that are assisting the appraisers with some of their work, but they do need to have Department of Revenue-recognized accreditation in order to appraise properties. If they didn't personally appraise it, and someone without accreditation appraised, then they have to review it as an accredited appraiser. It, it is an understaffing. We have been growing and reducing numbers, and growing and reducing numbers as, you know, life events happen. That's pretty common in any kind of business. But the two staff members that we currently have accredited, they're wonderful. The commercial appraiser has been there long enough to kind of understand how commercial really works. That's her primary responsibility, and then she does residential as a secondary responsibility. And then, I'm sorry, I've, what was your second question of that?
The second question, thank you, and it sounds like you all are, yeah, it sounded to me when you said it, that you all were definitely understaffed, only two appraisers for the entire county. The second question was, is it required by law for, to ensure every property is brought to 100% market value each year? Is that what your task to do?
Yes, it is.
Got you. So with that being said, obviously, you're understaffed, right? And there are folks that are being, you know, they're feeling like their property taxes are skyrocketing overnight due to the assessment updates. And there are folks that feels, that feel like there's some unequal treatment happening. Because, right, they're, they're getting this, this, in, in their opinion, unfairly high tax bill relative to their neighbors. So I just want to ask the question, for those who feel as though this is an issue of unequal treatment, obviously, we know it's far more complex than that. What recourse do individual homeowners have if they feel their tax bill is unfairly high relative to their neighbors who haven't been revalued yet?
Their opportunity to discuss their assessments, if they feel they're unfair, is after they receive their change of value notice. So it's prior to the year they receive their tax bill. We talked to thousands of property owners last year when assessment notices went out. We helped them determine how to estimate what their taxes were going to be. We were hoping to avoid, you know, the big, I got, I finally got my tax bill, and oh my gosh, kind of, you know, rush on the emotions. And, and I think it actually helped quite a bit. We are doing mass appraisal. So when you say, if your neighbor's isn't quite up to what yours is, well, we're doing mass appraisal, and there's always going to be some properties that are missed, but we're trying to be the most fair, but affect the most properties that we possibly can. There's always going to be properties that are missed. We did find, you know, there were a lot of undeveloped lots in Pullman that hadn't even been looked at for quite a few years. We were able to go through and statistically catch all of those. So we've put a lot of checks and balances into place to try to keep that from happening, which are always going to have some that fall through.
Okay, with that, Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think just one other thing. I think as a city, what, what we can do is, is try to help, help you get the word out, which is what we're doing here. We'll continue to talk to our citizens, take input from them, I think, provide information to you about things. From what I understand, they can also discuss with you if it's unfair. And I appreciate Tremaine mentioning that again. I think also something that perhaps we can look at, and I will talk to the mayor after, counsel, is, is see how we can share out more of the county information, so we can work more as a team and, and collaborate better. So I appreciate you coming. I know, I know it's difficult to hear a lot of stuff, and, you know, the community, I know, is extremely angry. You've heard it. I don't think I need to express all that anger to you. But I'm sure if there's questions, I will likely be passing them on to you, so you can address them in a proper way, so.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for accepting the invitation to come speak and for explaining as much as you have, and also bringing up some options for people to get some help and perhaps some relief. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
So I have a couple clarifying ones. So the first is, you, you've talked about the senior, and I'm wondering, what is the eligibility requirements for seniors?
The age requirement is 61. Your, if you're a two-partner household, one of the partners needs to be 61, the other one can be as low as 57. Or on disability from the state, or a disabled veteran with an 80% service rating. The income threshold changes. When, I briefly touched on ratios from the state. Your ratio determines your income threshold. We were at $40,000. That is net a year for a very long time. Due to the changes in assessments and upward tick of our ratio, we brought that up to 40,400. So again, that's net. If you are on only social security income, it's as simple as bringing us our social security statement. We'll do the math for you, and we'll figure out, you know, where you're going to sit at. Those that are on social security and retirement, or even have, you know, a, a part-time job, we like to see the front page of your tax return, and then we can help you determine well, where you would fall in that threshold. It is not well-known, but once you go on the senior program, your property value is frozen. So if you go on the senior program at, say, $100,000, it is, wherever you fall in that value range is always going to be that as long as you're on the program. So if you live another 30 years, and that property is now worth 700,000, you're still only taxed at 100,000. It's frozen, and it never changes as long as you're on the program. So that's another really neat benefit that's not well-known.
And this is related to owners. You've heard where we have renters that fall into this category. Is there any option or recourse for them in order to get any type of relief as it relates to this? If they're the, if they're renting the place, even though the owner doesn't meet the criteria? So I'm asking the...
Right. There are, there are three different types of inhabitants in Pullman. You've got renters strictly renting. They are seeing the cost of property taxes passed through their rent. All the cost of owning that property is passed on to the renters. That's the point of having a renter. You have people with improvements that they own, that they're then renting the land under. So mobile home parks, that's a number one improvement on leased land. Their mobile homes, they should, they should certainly come in and talk to us about their value. They're treated exactly like a single-family residence. They should come in and talk to us and try to get relief on at least their real property taxation. We can't control, from the Assessor's Office, what the rents are going to be for mobile home parks or for, you know, multifamily homes. We have no control or recourse for that. I know that it is a big concern. I get a lot of phone calls about what can we do about that. It is outside the scope of my office, and I just have a fringe knowledge of what they can do. So I try to be very clear that we can't help with what their recourse might be. As far as full 100% owner occupiers, they're bound to that timeline of coming in when change of value notices go out.
Okay, great. And then, in relationship to how we got where we're at with the current situation, was, who was assessed? You had half of Pullman, and then in the county, who is assessed in the county? Was it half of the county?
It was everyone.
So everyone in the county, half of Pullman?
The end of the six-year cycle saw the second half of Pullman being assessed, and then year one of the new cycle, we decided to leave that second half of Pullman alone, bring the other half of year one up to meet them. And I know this is really hard unless you see it on a timeline, it's hard to understand what we are doing. But we wanted to get everyone in Pullman up to the same level, and going forward, they will all be assessed at the same time. It will no longer be a split of north to south between years. It will be all assessed at the same time. And then in doing that, we also statistically adjusted the rest of the county, all of the county. So we did a lot of spreadsheets. We said, you know, hay needs to come up 15%, Tico needs to come up 15%, unincorporated Whitman County needs to come up 15%. And we applied that statistical update to everyone else outside of Pullman.
So what you did, so make sure I understand it right, the ones that were previously assessed, you actually put a pause on that assessment for a year, even though everybody else you, you re-leveled in order to give them some relief compared to everything else? Even though that relief isn't necessarily equivalent to what the first increase was the previous year?
Right.
Okay.
We, we didn't feel that it was fair to statistically update that. We didn't feel that it was fair to statistically update that half when they had just been brought up so high before we actually could get the other half up to match them. But going forward, everyone will be on the same level of statistically being updated.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Fergie, do you have any last? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Gaither?
Thank you. And I know you've already answered this question and I apologize if I'm asking you to beat a dead horse. Okay? So maybe I'm asking the question in a different way. Just, you know, for the, for the audience members who have a similar way of thinking as, as I do. I just want to know, because the years of undervaluation and getting snapped into eighty percent of the market value all at once, is, it is financially jolting, right? And that's a, that could be a massive one-time increase, as many of my fellow council members mentioned, especially for our fixed income residents. And I'm, I, I want to, you know, in the, in the spirit of trying to prevent this from happening in the future, how will the county predict and communicate these potential spikes? If we know a certain neighborhood, for example, is slated for a large valuation hike? Is there a way to warn and prepare residents in advance? So they can plan for this potential impact? Because I think that's what we're also dealing with.
We do tend to try to alert the physical inspection area that we are out in the area, we're inspecting. One, we want you to know why our cars are in the area. And two, we want you to know there are potential changes coming. We hope that going forward, every year you would expect at least some attention to every parcel. And everyone will become accustomed to watching for their change of value notices because the change of value notice is the catalyst for conversation, is the point where we can, you know, make any changes to what we've just adjusted. Uh, hopefully there won't be a need to warn anybody going forward. It'll just be part of the process the way it's intended to be.
Okay, with that, thank you Assessor Flo Dean. We appreciate you coming here. And I, I know there's always a lot of questions around this and I appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Thank you for having me.
Our next agenda item is, we have a City of Pullman's Economic Development. So Sean Miller, our Economic Development Manager. With that, Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, great to see you guys. Whether that's one-on-one, working on a project, or in this type of atmosphere, I'm excited to get to chat today. I'll just hop right into it. And if you don't mind, just saving questions to the end, we'll have a, a moment where we can go over that. Um, and I appreciate some of you who, who let me know heads up after viewing the slides, what kind of questions you might have available for me following this. So we'll hop right into it. I want to talk a little bit about what we did in twenty twenty-four as economic development and then give you a little bit of a path forward on what twenty twenty-five looks like, or has looked like thus far, and what we plan to do in the future. So always try to start something like this with what is economic development? It's a question that I get all the time because it's just one of those things where there's a lot to talk about, a lot to cover, and it's kind of hard to kind of condense that down into one thing. So something I always try to say is that, you know, primarily, uh, in Pullman thus far, I focus a lot on startups. We're trying to move into working with larger employers, a little bit more mature businesses, to help them navigate things that pop up on a, on a routine basis, or, or something that pops up on a, kind of a unique basis to help them get through that process. So, um, so we try to create conditions for, for a business to thrive. And that, that can entail supporting jobs, making sure that there's talent available, and just community vitality and all. Attracting and retaining and growing investments. So a lot of what I do happens to be behind the scenes. A lot of times I'm working with business owners, a little bit in the shadows and then super happy when they're successful and have a program that, that comes out, whether that's something within their store or maybe that's moving locations or negotiating a new lease. All different kinds of things that I work with, with those businesses. And then we try to focus on long-term prosperity and not just short-term wins. The short-term wins are great. And I think that, you know, as, as a city, we enjoy those short-term wins. But there's a lot that I'll talk about today about planting seeds for the future and the resiliency of Pullman as we move forward. The only other thing that I'll add for this slide and, and what is economic development is a little sign that I have that I hang at my desk. And I won't go through and, and quote it all for you, but essentially that little sign shows that me as an economic developer, my job is to assist people on their, on their path to not only economic prosperity for themselves, but the American dream. And that really hits home for me. It's, it's, it makes you see things differently when you make a purchase downtown, whether that's food or a shirt or whatever it might be, or all throughout Pullman. When you make that purchase, you're supporting people. It's not necessarily just something for yourself. So it's really exciting to kind of have that, this type of position and, and see those things play through. So a little bit about twenty twenty-four in review. You guys might have heard a little bit about the scale program and the progress that we made through that. That's streamlined concepts for advancing, advancing local enterprises. One thing that we do is we work with local businesses, whether that's creating a new marketing plan or somebody who's interested in starting a new business and they don't know how to do a business plan. Last year in twenty twenty-four, we had the goal implementing the scale progress, uh, process to highlight and work with six different businesses. And we did really well with the scale process. We actually worked with eleven businesses hand in hand. So that was a lot of business plans, a lot of marketing plans, a lot of working with them on just working around the, the decision of, do I make enough money? Is my business far enough along where I can hire somebody? Is my business far enough along where I can take this business from my home and move it to a brick and mortar facility? And so those are things where we're really going to dig into their financials. What is their plan look like? What does their growth look like over the last few years? And make a cognitive decision on whether or not it's, they're ready as a business to, to take those leaps. The last thing I want to do is encourage a business to, to, to move into a brick and mortar facility. And six months later, they realize they don't have the sales to support that. So it's really important to me to do a full, robust interview with them and a full working, have a full working relationship with them. So like I said, we had eleven businesses that were involved with scale last year. Those are usually five, five meetings or more. I have a kind of a smaller, a smaller impact that I track as well, where it's two to three meetings with somebody. So sometimes that's the question of, you know, just different types of techniques with their business, what they can do. We worked with forty-eight different businesses in the startup realm with Pullman last year. And then in, in total, I guess, for the business licenses and endorsements, we did nearly four hundred new business licenses and endorsements for the City of Pullman last year. So that's really exciting to see. Another big thing that we do is we work with the collaboration on regional partnerships. One thing that I realized coming into this role was that there's a lot of different hands in the economic development cookie jar, if you will. It was important for me to make sure that with this job, have, having so much involved with it, we were all partnering together to ensure we're not having overlap. We're not doing the same jobs that everybody else is doing and just repeating or recreating the wheel. So we created the RAP group. I'm not going to give you a RAP today. It's just stands for Regional Alliance for Prosperity on the Palouse. The, the regional alliance consists of the Port of Whitman. We work really closely with them. Obviously, the City of Pullman and Small Business Development Center. We had some previously that have lost funding since then. But we've made sure to kind of pick up the pieces and make sure that we're not leaving Pullman's businesses by the wayside. So that was really important to us to make sure we're hitting on all cylinders as we move forward as a team in the economic development realm for not only Pullman, but for Whitman County. We try to give, create a solutions and community impact. I think a big thing for me in the first year was I answered so many phone calls for the same questions over and over. So a big project that we pushed forward was creating assistance documents. So if somebody calls and says, hey, I want to create a business in Pullman, but I don't know quite how, I'm not, again, recreating the wheel every single time I get that question. We have a document now that we can just send to them. They can follow all the links and kind of have that helping hand along the way. And then obviously a phone number where they can call me or, or text me, email me, whatever way feels best for them, where I can help them if they hit a snag on something. And then just kind of express my personal gratitude towards economic development. I really love this job. I really love being in this type of role. Something that I do on my own personal time is, is being a part of the childcare aware of Eastern Washington. So child, childcare in general is so important, not only to our community here, but to the, you know, the entire state of Washington. There's a lot that we're working on to try to make it more feasible, more obtainable for business owners to have this type of business and for the people who are dropping their children off every day at daycare, to make it more affordable for them. We also want to help out the businesses' employees. A lot of businesses' employees for childcare, they don't get healthcare. They don't have wages that are going to encourage them to make this a career. And so those are things that we're chasing right now within childcare aware of Eastern Washington. As I said with the RAP group, economic development is a team sport. There's not an organization that can do it all. We're very dependent on one another to stay in constant communication and work as a team. Each player that we have has a unique role, whether that's in workforce training or different types of grants that might be available, or different types of processes that could be a helping hand along the way for our businesses. And then obviously, when we row in the same direction, we get, we get results. So we want to keep coordinated efforts to lead stronger outcomes for Pullman's economy. Talked a little bit about planting seeds for long-term growth and I, I want to touch on that. Economic development doesn't happen overnight. It takes consistent effort and vision for us to be able to, to navigate these pathways. So sometimes small actions today can have a much larger impact tomorrow. These can be things like simple conversations or relationship building to make sure that when somebody has a question, they're willing to pick up the phone and make a phone call to our office instead of just making assumptions or kind of feeling like they got left behind. We want to make sure that that relationship is strong and they can always reach out to us. Some of the most impactful projects start really quietly. And there's been some, you know, within just the last few weeks that I've worked with, with some of you guys sitting up here, where we've seen different types of options and opportunities moving forward that can really make a difference in our community. So very exciting for that. Some examples of seeds we are planting, I'm really excited at building a partnership with WSU and the Center for Entrepreneurship with Paul Warner right now. We got to meet a couple of months ago and talk about different ideas that we had for moving forward within our community. I think that he's going to be a great resource to not only the Economic Development Department, but to the city as a whole. We've got some, just some really, really cool ideas that we're looking at moving forward. Engaging property owners to unlock underutilized commercial spaces. I know this is something that's come up plenty of times with our, you know, especially there's been a, I think, kind of a spotlight on downtown Pullman with the vacancies that we have there. I think that those types of, the fixes that we have coming for that all start with relationship and communication. So that's a big one that I'm pursuing right now. Obviously, continued development of tools and, and resources for startups throughout their business journey. I want to make sure that a business is confident after, say, we send them that starting a business in Pullman document. They go through, they get it started. They're not worried about feeling sheepish, asking any questions. We want to have a strong relationship. So again, they can just pick up their phone and reach out with any questions they may have. We want to encourage new business models such as coworking and mobile. Big shout out to the Gladys Community Center and Councilmember Parks who sits on the board for, for the Gladys. She was really excited to work with Gladys and push forward a new, a little bit alternative coworking space, something that we haven't seen in Pullman for a very long time. And I'm excited to see what we can turn that into. It's going to be a continued effort, I think, as we work towards filling those seats. But very excited to kind of work with our community partners as well. And then obviously exploring childcare solutions to strengthen workforce participation. I talked a little bit about being a part of childcare aware for Eastern Washington. Some of the statistics that we have within that organization are very, they're astounding. We're looking at things, I think, since COVID, about eight billion dollars being left out of the economy for parents who are staying home with their children because they don't have childcare. This is something that is, you know, going to be very important for us moving forward. We're, we're working a little bit behind the scenes with some different organizations right now around childcare to make sure that we can support our, our future progress. And then today and beyond, a, a big priority for twenty twenty-five is going to be reaching out for BRN, which is Business Retention and Expansion, and that includes business recruitment. We're looking at all these vacant spaces and we're reaching out to some of the businesses in surrounding areas and, and beyond to see what could be a good fit for our Pullman community to try to bring in these businesses that are also going to bring in foot traffic and then kind of bleed out into our community and support what we've got here right now. So we're focusing on very high-impact sectors. We've got great partners around that, that I've been able to work with. I'm very excited about those new relationships. And I will definitely keep you guys updated as we move forward on that. Continued growth around the scale program. It's, we, we, I've got three businesses calling today to start up, uh, to start new businesses. And there are three entrepreneurs, I should say, calling today to start new businesses. And so this is some, something that's really neat. I'm really excited about their business plans, really excited about what they're doing. We're looking at alternative ways to keep overhead low and keep them kind of chugging along and, and being able to kind of take those hits that the economy might throw out as we push forward. We've done a business blend resurgence. So the business blend has been along, around a long time. I used to go back in, I think, twenty fifteen when it was called Cup of Joe. Really neat program. We've partnered with Pullman Marketing, who kind of took that on in the Port of Whitman. It's kind of this, I guess, three-headed monster to try to give this resurgence to the business blend. Bring in speakers who are going to be very pointed to our business environment and be able to help out with the situations that they see coming in the future. How to do, how do we deal and navigate with these different things that are happening within Pullman right now? Our most recent speaker was Austin Storm, and that was a great, as an owner for Bully for you and Colfax and Storm Cellar in Moscow. It was really neat to bring an entrepreneur in here and have conversations with our local entrepreneurs to show what those ups and downs were for them along the way. I was really excited for that one. Our next one is going to be actually Paul Warner, as I mentioned earlier, from WSU. So that'll be a great one. It's the second little plug, second Thursday of every month here in council chambers at eight AM. I don't know if that was appropriate, but I hope it was. It's a great thing to attend. WSU Center for Entrepreneurship Collaborations. We'll stick on the subject of Paul Warner, I guess. I'm going to mention him a few times. One of the things that we're working on is we're utilizing a gap analysis that shows a driving distance around Pullman in about a thirty-minute range. And we can actually see what ours, what our citizens drive beyond thirty minutes to visit in another town, another city, what that looks like. And then we can evaluate the stores they're visiting, whatever genre of store that is. And we can try to see, is that store going to be something that is successful here in Pullman? If we deem that to be a potential success in Pullman, we're going to start the process of working with each other and some of their students to build business plans, understand the cash injection needed, locate different vacant buildings that could be filled with these types of businesses, and then push forward with trying to find investors or entrepreneurs to, to kind of take that on and run with it. So I think it's going to be a great program. I'm really excited. We're going to start with about five to ten different businesses and go from there. And then we're going to work really hard to highlight our local business success stories. I think it's something that I've not done well doing, and I want to show what Pullman has actually done. We've got some businesses in Pullman that are incredible, that are doing really great things. And we want to highlight that and be able to show people that Pullman is a place where you can do business, where you can be extremely successful. You can lean on the partners that we have here in the community and have that chase for the American dream. So I won't harp on this one too much, but why does this matter? Obviously, our thriving economy is a stronger tax base and, and it's going to fund public services and infrastructure. Supporting entrepreneurship and small business grows community resilience. I think when you spend money at a small business that's locally owned, the, the data says that that money will stay in the community and change hands seven more times before it leaves. That's something that we really, as, as just people who live in Pullman, we need to understand that and, and do our best to support our local small business. But this is how we shape Pullman's future, both intentionally and sustainably. I appreciate you guys and your time, and I'm going to open it up for questions.
With that, any questions? Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This was a lot of information, Sean. I really appreciate you doing this. I want to make sure I have some things correct here. I have quite a few questions, but I'll only choose a few. And then we can catch up at a different time.
I'm happy to follow up.
Now, did you say you're moving, you're focusing more on established businesses now and expanding established and away from startups? Is that correct?
Not necessarily away from startups, but some of my free time, I talked a little bit about twenty twenty-four. I think I estimated about thirty percent of my time was working with startups who were calling and asking the same questions. By creating those documents and allowing, I guess, allowing the process to send that out and let the document take- and let the document take care after we establish, you know, a quick relationship, I'm freeing up a lot of that time. And what I've decided with that, with that time that is allotted is that I want to pursue more businesses and try to fill some of our commercial spaces moving forward, as well as working with new, more, or excuse me, more mature businesses to see what I can help with along the way. Most of my phone calls come from startups or early-stage businesses, but I'm going to try to reach out a little bit more to the more developed businesses and just start that relationship and see where it leads.
Okay. I think I, you know, I've, I've brought a number of different businesses to you or shared your information with them. And I'm happy to see that Modern Plants Man is still around, even though there's some bumps along the road, but seems like he's doing great. Do you have, and I didn't bring up the website, I should have, on our city website, kind of a, hey, come to me, because a lot of people are telling me, we didn't know you have this. And maybe that's our failure at getting it out there. But that's really important. And if you have a flow chart, a, you know, startup flow chart, putting it out there, I think also things such as, and maybe these are things that you're already thinking of, but I'm just going to real quick go through these because I know Francis and I were a part of the Palouse Knowledge Corridor. Francis was really the driver, along with Marie Dimkowski with that. You know, an economic ecosystem map, if you have those. I know you talk a lot about the seeds of business, but not so much about the ground that needs to be prepared for business. And a lot of that actually is not necessarily related to business development itself. It's more related to why would people come here to start a business? Do we have the events? Do we have the culture, the experiences that people want? So when they're here, they're like, okay, fine, I have a business, but what the heck am I going to do other than wander the wheat fields? And so being able to connect with, like, the county, what else is going on around us, I think is, is extremely important. I don't know how much outreach you're doing to other, you know, counties necessarily or outside into the county. I think also one thing that I would like to know is, are you having the hard discussions with people who may, they have a dream? They're like, I'm this entrepreneur. I totally want to bring this, you know, massive business, but it's just not necessarily the right fit, or you don't think it's the right fit here. And I'll give you a good example, my example. Loved paintball in my early twenties. Started a paintball business. But really, it's not sustainable as a single source of income. And I had to learn the hard way about that. And are you having those hard discussions with people? And then on top of that, what do you feel is the biggest challenge to starting a business in Pullman? And how can we mitigate those so that we can make it easier on you, but also on, on businesses in general? Sorry, I've thrown a lot at you.
That's okay.
I will talk to you later about the rest.
That's okay. If I forget something along the way, please let me know. I'll start with the website. I think that is imperative to, to have a website that is functioning and shows an outline of, of really what we do. And that's something that we've been working on with the communications coordinator. So what we've done is we have actually created these, like I said, these documents that are going to go on this website as well. We've created the outlines for each, each section. And then we've kind of done some market research looking at other cities and what do their websites look like to make it very intuitive? What's the best process for an economic development department to look at? So we want to make it pretty. We would have liked to have it out a little bit earlier, but I don't want to put out a subpar product before it's really ready to go. But I would say that that's probably a month away. We're not very far away from that. It's looking really good and all the descriptions are created and, and our, our communications coordinator has been awesome to work with on that one. So really excited about that one. You talked a little bit about making sure that the community is the right place for entrepreneurs who are interested in coming here. And I think that outreach, I think that's less about outreach and more about being our own champion. We need to talk about the successes that we have in Pullman. And if we could highlight that in an appropriate way and really partner with the, with the, with the chamber on, you know, their tourism side, if we can have some type of joint program that we put together to really highlight this and show this. Because I have certain restrictions as a, a city employee that I'm not necessarily able to promote a specific business, but I can work with partners who can do that. I think that'll be a great thing as we move forward. And we've kind of started that process with, with WSU as well, at least the conversation part. So I completely agree and I'm excited to kind of move forward with that one because I am, I want to be our own champion. I want to show Pullman what's really happening here. And I want to, you know, our citizens to be proud of what, what's going on, not necessarily from what's happening as a city standpoint, but our, our, our local entrepreneurs that are going out there and doing the hard things. We talked about a modern plantsman moving seven times in three years, which is crazy. But how exciting is it that he found somebody to work with who's, who's willing to get him in a location and work on a, a specific scale around a lease that works for him? That's really exciting to me, and I'm really excited to see that, that landlord moving into Pullman and seeing what they might do for the future. So that's, that's a great part to, to move forward on. But, you know, I think as, as Pullman continues to move forward, these are definitely things that we need to look at. We need to keep improving. We need to keep doing the best that we can do and, and taking input from people who have experience and people who have the ear of the community so we can understand better what we can do moving forward to, to be the best for Pullman. There was another question at the end.
Yeah. What can we do? So what, what do you see being in this role as the biggest challenge that you face, getting people to that kind of point where they're sustainable? And what can we as council do?
I think something that I've seen that's been really successful are some of the businesses that have started kind of on, on a bootstrapping level, and they've got the cottage business. So they're working out of their own home, they're funding their, their, their activities, and then working over the course of a few years to get to a point where they're ready to open a brick-and-mortar facility. That's really exciting for me. And I've worked with some of them who have come to me with those questions and to build a business plan for that business, to move into a brick-and-mortar, to look at their finances and have a full understanding of, your growth projections do support this? I'm really excited about those kind of conversations because it's very difficult to, I've seen a lot of difficulty, I should say, in businesses who want to jump right in, rent a, a location, and then they don't have the sales to follow it. That's been really difficult. The, the landscape of, of rentals in Pullman has been both on a scale of being difficult to achieve when it comes to the amount. And then on the other side, to, to kind of gather a following. But when you can gather a following, there's some, you know, cult classics in Pullman that people will not get away from, and I'm really excited about that. If I could promote businesses, which I'm not allowed to, I would say, you know, I won't say it. You know, there's just some, some businesses that are really exciting to see very soon coming to Pullman near downtown to bring new, I guess, economic development and livelihood to the, to the area.
Thank you. Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Thank you, Sean, and thank you for your help with Gladys. It was, it's really, really been, it was very helpful and, and very, for a nonprofit especially, to get your level of expertise was, was really fantastic. So thank you. I have a question about the economic development portion that would involve property or building owners. Do you have any roundtables with them to sort, to let them know what, that, what it looks like right now and maybe some of the barriers? Has that been a possibility at all?
That's something that we can certainly look at when it comes to roundtables and bringing people into the same room at the same time. For now, my approach has been, because we are a little bit scattered when it comes to our building owners. You know, some are here in town, some are across the border, some are in Spokane. They're kind of all around the place. And so I've kind of taken the approach of reaching out to them on a singular basis, trying to build a relationship to a point where, again, we can trust each other and understand that when I, if I do have to come to them and have a hard conversation, like Nathan was talking, or excuse me, like Councilmember Weller was talking about, I want to make sure that they know that that comes from a heartfelt place. I don't want them to feel defensive when it comes to trying to get everybody a room and, and saying, we need to do X, Y, and Z, because there's a multitude of factors that, that go into this situation that we're dealing with in Pullman with different vacancies, whether that's the amount that it, it costs to move into some locations or just the fact that some of our locations are a lot larger than what's being requested. So oftentimes, I'm getting phone calls requesting about 1,500 square feet. And when we especially will highlight again downtown, when we drive through downtown and look at our different locations, we don't necessarily have a building or an availability that, that expand or that, that shrinks down to 1,500 square feet. So some of the things that we'd look at is, again, working with those building owners to say, hey, is there an opportunity for us to only utilize this area? Or can we stack different business owners within this location? Who can, who would work well together and, and which businesses would complement each other, those types of things? So as far as the building owners, I think I've liked to take that, that one-off approach, and it's gone well. It's gone really well, I, I would say. And I think we're ready to kind of start moving into those conversations about what Pullman's future looks like, especially following the downtown project and, and the, you know, the beautiful downtown that we have now.
Thank you. That's very encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Fajarin?
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate you being here and even more appreciative about just how your willingness to meet with me this past year and a half. Just always available, and I always appreciate that, meeting, having a coffee downtown. You mentioned that important to you is investing time in relationships, and that, that, that shows from how you conduct yourself as our Economic Development Manager. Really pointed question specifically about childcare, something that I'm sure we've all heard is just the lack, and you touched base on it completely, is just the lack of affordable childcare options. We have an economy where unfortunately both parents need to work, and you can't do that if you have children that need taking care of. So you mentioned you were a part of Child Care Aware. You've had some conversations around childcare. What does Pullman need in order to lock that opportunity for us to provide or encourage businesses to provide childcare opportunities in businesses here in Pullman?
No, I think that Pullman needs some help and support. When you're operating a childcare facility, the overhead is, excuse me, the, you're not going to make a ton of money. It's just what it comes down to when you factor in overhead, when you factor in the, the costs for your employees. We need to, we need to find a way to make it a little bit more profitable for our owners. I think one of the big things that we run into right now, and I think this would resonate from different communities, especially we can look specifically at Colfax right now. They're working with the Port of Whitman to create a facility, and the port has said, you know, they're ready to build a facility for childcare. We just need to find someone to run it, and it's crickets. Okay? So that's what we're running into. It's really difficult. It is very pointed when it comes to who's allowed to run these childcare facilities. It requires a specific level of degree. It requires a very specific degree itself. And that makes it very difficult along the way to, to find the support that's needed to, to run these facilities. That being said, I think we need to focus drastically on the facilities that we have now. Make sure that we're supporting them in every way that we can so that they stay here. Now, that might be, again, working with some of them to make sure that the relationship they have with their landlord is beneficial, working with them on different types of SBA lending to say, hey, maybe it's time to buy your facility so that you're secured as you move forward and you can lower your overhead. Things like that are the conversations that we need to be having. And I would share that we are working with a local church who doesn't utilize their building to identify new ways of utilization for that facility. And one of those top-of-the-list items right now is childcare. Can we turn this into a childcare facility? What requirements are going to be needed for, for outdoors? There's so much that goes into it that I can see why it's difficult for people to get, get it rolling. But it takes community members, like the ones that I'm working with from that church, to be able to step up and say, we're willing to take this on because we want to be a blessing for our community. Not because it's going to be super profitable, but because we want to help our community. And so I think that when it comes to childcare, I would love to say, hey, let's open a childcare facility, and you're going to make so much money. But the fact of the matter is, that's not going to happen. We need people who are willing to step up and say, I have a passion for this and a heart for this, and I want to bless our community and, and be a part of this as we move forward to, to help our parents.
Thank you for that answer. So what I'm hearing, it's extremely hard, childcare just in general is extremely hard to be profitable.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. And you recommend that we focus primarily, just currently, on our business, the childcare businesses that we have?
I think it's a very, it needs to be a very strong focus because we've lost at least two over the last couple of years. And I think losing more could be detrimental to, to our community and to our parents who are trying to go out and, and, and work two jobs. We don't all have that, especially in a community like Pullman where it's, it's a little bit transient. We have a lot of maybe grad students and that sort of thing. They don't have that familial support who can step up and say, we'll watch your child as you, as you go do your thing. So, yeah, we need to focus and do everything that we can to keep what we've got. And when we feel secure in that, we can move forward on trying to create new.
Thank you for that insight. I just have one more question. You mentioned specifically about it's, when it comes to these businesses, it's their relationship with their landlord. Just anecdotally, I've asked business owners how much they're paying for rent in downtown Pullman. And for, just the numbers they gave me, I find it's just ridiculous. I don't understand how some folks in certain industries can turn a profit with rent that high. You and I have talked about how some of our, the buildings that are rented out, some of the owners don't even live in Pullman. And so do you have any insight on is, is the, the amount that these landlords are, are charging? Is it fair to our market? Is it, is it an issue? Just any insight around that. I'd appreciate that.
So is that the EDIM, maybe, which is a Economic Development Information Meeting put on by the Port of Whitman, maybe six months ago? They've partnered with, I believe it's Eastern Washington, University of Eastern Washington, to create a website called WhitmanCountyTrends.org. And one of the things that they highlighted on that website when they came in and did their presentation was the price per square foot for Whitman County as a whole, so not necessarily Pullman, and what that is comparable to other locations. So we can talk about working with specific, you know, entrepreneurs who have spots here and also have spots in Spokane, and they talk about that differentiation, how much cheaper it is for them to be on Main Street in Spokane than it is here. We can also talk about that, that highlighted website that talked about being close to $30 per square foot for commercial and industrial in Whitman County compared to 18 for Spokane, for the city of Spokane. So there is a, a great disparity there. Obviously, we can't control, you know, the rents that are being put forward and the lease agreements that are being put forward, but these is, it's definitely information that we can bring forward to these owners to tell them, or to kind of show them the data and show them what it's going to take to keep businesses here in Pullman. But it is a, a barrier for a lot of the vitality for some of these businesses.
Thank you, Sean. I love the Whitman County Trends. I think, I think it's sent to council, or I might be the only one who received them, but I'm pretty sure we all receive it. So it is, it does provide tremendous insight, especially around data. Thank you, Sean.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Guido?
Hi, Sean. Thank you for your presentation and your, your positivity, because I always feel like you have a positive outlook. More of a comment, I think, because kind of taking off on what Councilmember Fajarin said as far as daycare, or childcare, rather. I'm interested in, in the implications of business development and how well the city and us as a council are keeping up with the implications of that development. So childcare is one of them, right? But housing, because I look at that, you know, a study just showed that we need to have 10,000 more units of housing by 2040. We're encouraging businesses to come here, but what are we doing in terms of looking down the road and saying, what are all the things that go with that to support that in the infrastructure? So just wondering if you're having those kinds of conversations and what the outlook is?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, looking at Pullman's future and seeing what we need. On the business side, if, I guess, can I clarify? Are you asking more about what we're doing for housing or what we're doing to recruit businesses to kind of support that if we were to, to move forward with, say, getting? businesses to kind of support that if we were to move forward with, say, getting 10,000 houses by 2040?
Yeah, I mean, I know there's a limit to what you can do, but when you're having those conversations, which I assume encourages recruitment of those businesses, what are you thinking that we as a council and city officials should be thinking about to support that growth that's on the horizon and those trends that we should be looking at for the future?
Sure. I think that we need to look at Pullman as a way of how are we able to set Pullman apart from the rest? And how are we able to kind of prepare a situation where we're bringing in businesses that can support this growth that also works in contradiction with that too, or in support of that, I should say, to make more people want to come to this area? There's a lot of businesses right now that are kind of poking into Pullman who have some interest, that want to, want to understand more about what Pullman is and what our identity is. And I think that's something that we need to focus on as a whole when it comes to Pullman, is what is our identity and what are some businesses and what are some activities that we can bring into the area that parallel that? I think, you know, a big thing around our identity is, and I would say we're working with Yard Sports for trying to bring in a sports facility, trying to look at what that looks like for the city of Pullman and, again, supporting our identity around what would work well in this area. As far as trying to bring in more homes, I think that that's a, that's a really difficult question because we do have a little bit of stagnation on residential builders as it is right now. And so we need to start those conversations of understanding, why are these builders, why are they taking a break in Pullman right now? What can we do as a city to support them? I think we need to look at alternative options and understand what their needs are. We have different types of processes that we could look at and really explore to see if, is there support that can happen from the council side or from the city side to really bring in and garner more? I would say that, you know, identifying different locations and finding desirable locations for them would be a great place to start. But I really think it comes down to conversations with these builders, with these developers to understand fully what they want. We can assume all that, all we want, but until we talk to them and have those conversations, I think we might be a little lost. So I would start with those conversations, build a reputation and a rapport with them and understand what their true needs are.
Councilmember Delara.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation, and also thank you for incorporating the answers to the questions I asked over the email.
Absolutely, thank you.
So I appreciated that. So I have two questions. Could you tell me more about the experience level people have in terms of knowledge about running a business that reach out to you for help to establish a business in Pullman? And who are the types of people that participate in the scale program? Would be interested in learning about that.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Delara. I think it's, it's such a robust spectrum when you look at who reaches out. Sometimes it's startups that are, you know, they just said, hey, I had an idea last night, and I want to know, is this something that's feasible? What would it cost me to get going? And so we're all the way from a three-hour entrepreneur, you know, to somebody who might be reaching out and saying, hey, we're over in, you know, over in Idaho, and we want to expand over here to Pullman, and we're looking at different spots, and we've been chatting with some people. And so we've got a, you know, we've been operating for seven, eight, nine, 10 years over here, but we just want to understand the quirks and what it would take for Washington State, and so we can walk through those. So it's always just kind of a judgment thing. I try to always give them the option to say, hey, I want more, or I'm good with that, I need less. And I think the documents help with that as well. They can kind of skip around to what works best with them. But I always try to end those relationships, or end those phone calls, I should say, with, you know, an open-ended side of the relationship. Let's talk again in a week and see where you are. I don't want that idea that you had last night, that could be a really great idea. I don't want you to get spooked when you get on the Department of Revenue site or the Secretary of State website, you start building these different licenses and that sort of thing. I think it's really important to understand in my position that entrepreneurs want to do the thing that they want to do, and they could care less about QuickBooks. Sorry, Rayleigh, if you're still here. No more Excel sheets, no QuickBooks. They want to focus on their specific business. And so my job is to come in and make sure that the things that they don't care as much about can be taken up, give them some warm and fuzzies so that they can move forward with their passion.
And then my second question was one I asked over email. So one of the comments that we hear is Pullman is struggling to keep businesses. How does the current economic growth and business stability compare to a few years ago, such as five to 10 years?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think that's, it was a little bit difficult for me to answer, just being that I wasn't in the role at that point. But as far as kind of where we sit on, I guess, growth and stability, we do hear a lot of the Pullman is struggling, and so we want to make sure that we're attacking that and kind of alleviating that. So the data tells a little bit of a different story. Compared to five to 10 years ago, our business license growth is steady. We talked about last year being at 397 business licenses and endorsements. Now, that's not businesses that are outside Pullman that need an endorsement to come into Pullman to work, which is the case with some, but these 397 were specific. They are in Pullman. They're growing here, and that was a big reason, you know, we don't necessarily see 400 new businesses popping up, but there's a lot of at-home businesses, things like that, which was a big reason why we pushed forward with the Gladys Coworking space. But the scale program alone has helped, you know, 11 businesses launch last year. We've lost some businesses, as is natural in any community, and is currently ongoing throughout the country. We're seeing that. We're seeing new ones fill the gaps as well, and that's exciting. We need to kind of adjust and learn from, I don't want to say our mistakes, but we need to learn from the activities that kind of led us down a road to closure. So sometimes that's a mistake, sometimes that's something that's completely out of the hands of the entrepreneur. But particularly in professional services, food, and personal care, right now, we're losing some bigger names but gaining a lot of startups. So the economy is diversifying, and our goal is to continue creating conditions where business can succeed long-term. By losing some of those larger businesses, that's a big reason why the focus this year is going to be on saying, what would be a great business for Pullman? And then pursuing that business and showing them the story of Pullman, what we can really bring to the table, and how we can support their business and vice versa.
Thank you so much.
So Councilmember Gaither, I'm not able to see you. Did you have any questions?
I can't see anything either, but I will say that on the topic of childcare providers, Whitman County currently meet only 23% of the estimated childcare need. And if we look at infants under the age of three, only 13% of the demand is met. And I just want to point out, and I think I just want to put this out there for the entire council, Seattle passed an ordinance in 2020 permitting childcare centers in virtually all zones. I think it's Ordinance 126131, the childcare near you legislation. It provides flexibility to establish new childcare centers in nearly all zones in the city, including neighborhood residential zones. And I guess my question is, what financial or zoning incentives could we offer to encourage childcare in new developments? And, and a deeper question, are our zoning rules potentially limiting new childcare facilities? And lastly, have any providers or potential in-home daycares given feedback on any potential local building or fire code hurdles, such as sprinkler systems, et cetera?
Yeah.
And is there a way to capture that feedback?
Those are great questions, Councilmember Gaither. I appreciate you bringing them up. I think I'll start with the in-home daycares as your last question. That is something that has not necessarily come up for me a lot in Pullman, but as part of Childcare Aware for Eastern Washington has come up. I believe it's something like when you hit 10 children in your at-home daycare, you do have to get sprinklers in your home. And that's been a large barrier because we're not hitting the point as an in-home daycare with the requirements that are set by the state to, again, you're not allowing yourself to be profitable. You have to hit a certain amount of children in order to kind of hit that tipping point. And so that's been a really difficult thing. As far as zoning for the city of Pullman and what we look like around childcare, I couldn't speak necessarily to the specifics of everything, but I will get back to you. I do know that with the church that we're working with around childcare there in an R1, and this is one of these locations that would allow a childcare facility as a business operating in a residential zone, and so that was exciting. You know, there are very few businesses that could do that. Childcare was one. But as far as the full gamut, I'd be more than happy to reach out to you and talk a little bit about more when I, when I can get that information.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you taking time to walk through all the questions. A lot of questions came up with this, and it's very informative and very helpful in that way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay. Next up is the consent agenda. The items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and be enacted by a single motion of city council without separate discussion. And if that, I entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With that, if you could read the consent agenda, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first item is a motion to dispense with the reading, reading the regular, sorry, reading regular meeting minutes of April 8, 2025, and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number 2011-30104 through 2011-30164, totaling $330,662.90. Item three, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable and recreation refund checks, number 2011-30165 through 2011-30337, totaling $579,905.09. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable payroll checks, number 2011-30338 through 2011-30352, and payroll electronic transfers, number 249 through 260 and 267, totaling $1,744,336.11. Item five, a motion authorizing the procurement of a new sewer camera van to replace vehicle number 06-187. Item six, a motion authorizing the procurement of a new front-end loader to replace unit number 00-250. Item seven, a motion awarding bid number 2025-001, water and sewer, general materials, and authorize all action necessary to execute contracts for such items. And finally, item eight, a motion accepting Tank 12 contract as complete.
With that, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those for the motion to approve the consent agenda, signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? That passes. Next on to regular agenda. First up, we have RJ Lott, Community Development Director, with a couple of our commission's 2025 goals and objective proposals. With that?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just as the mayor mentioned, this is an agenda item that has the goals and objectives of two of the city's commissions, one being the Environmental Resilience Commission and the other, the Historic Preservation Commission. As Mayor Benjamin noted earlier this evening, there are two vacancies on Historic Preservation, so wanting to, once again, notify the public that they have an opportunity to apply and to bring their, their skills and abilities to that commission as well. So the goals and objectives are included in your packet for this evening. I won't go over them individually, but if there are questions or concerns about some of those goals, I'd be happy to answer those. The council has the ability this evening to approve the goals as presented or to edit and approve those goals, return them to the commission for further consideration, or entirely reject the goals altogether. So with that, if there's any questions I can answer or any comments I can field, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Any questions related to any of the goals? Councilmember Weller.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You know, RJ, I think one of the challenges, especially right now, and I'm looking at the goals right now, is given the nature of some of the situations that we're facing across, you know, the nation, especially in reference to climate change, global warming, these sorts of things, place a particular target on departments in particular. But my concern is, especially with the environmental resilience, mention of those sorts of things might put us in a bit of a crosshairs. And I'm just, you know, not saying I'm against any of those mentions or anything like that. I'm just reading the field. So I'd like some of your kind of feedback with that or thoughts.
Yeah, as you or the council saw a number of months ago, the chair came forward with a presentation, and if you recall, they are a very proactive, ambitious group, which, coming from staff, as we work with them, that is something that's very commendable. So to answer your question, Councilman Weller, I think that some of these could take that into consideration moving forward, that some of those goals may not be dialed in to the point of taking that under consideration, but rather that these goals are full of ambition and positivity and forward-thinking. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Not really, but I do understand, I mean, it's great, forward-thinking, positivity, all of this. I just also want to make sure that, I guess it's just a, maybe I'm being over-cautious, but some of the things that we're starting to see, references to certain terms are being removed from departments, from committees around the nation. I'm not so sure here in Washington at this point, but moving forward, I think we also need to be somewhat careful of some of this. So I'm just, I'm just mentioning that because it's, things can happen, things have already happened that we didn't think were possible. And I'm not saying, trying to be partisan or anything, but I'm saying that we've got to move forward, but also cautiously and well-aware of what we're facing in the future, foreseeable future. So I'm just wanting to relay that and mention that to you. So I don't know how the rest of the city council feels, but yeah.
Any other questions for, Mr. Lott? Councilmember Guido?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
So, related to these goals, I appreciate that Environmental Resilience Commission proposed the objectives that are streamlined.
My.
I appreciate that the Environmental Resilience Commission proposed goals and objectives as they're outlined here are streamlined, because I remember the commission chair coming before this body, and it was quite an amount of time that we spent kind of going through those with him and his commission. They do remain ambitious, I agree, but I think goals are good. And I just more comment that I appreciate the fact that there is a mention here that the duties and responsibilities of this, of these commissions is upon them to seek private donations and grants, because I know that there's been considerable
to seek private donations and grants, because I know that there's been considerable confusion in the past, when people come on these commissions, thinking that there are city funds to, to provide for that, and there are not. So, I like the fact that it's just right up there up front.
Councilmember Gaither, do you have anything?
Not yet. Thanks for asking.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, and, and one of the things that, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fagerin?
Thank you. I just want to just make a comment. I know we're talking about environmental resilience, so I want to give a little credit to Historic Preservation Commission. One of the annual goals, hold a 250th year of signing the Declaration of Independence in 2026 in Pullman. And so, they have, it looks like they have a subcommittee already for it. That's something that I am just so excited for. So, mad props to both commissions in putting together these very ambitious goals. I love ambition. I love things that got to put you out of your comfort zone in order to obtain it. I also feel like, in this day and age where we're seeing these attacks, as Councilmember Weller mentioned, on municipalities and institutions that support these goals, now more than ever, we need to rise to the occasion and defend the environment. So, those are my comments.
Yeah. And related to that 250th, there's actually a state program that's come together related to this. I've met with the person that is the state coordinator, and then connected them to the Historic Preservation Commission, so they could, could look at this. So, I'm excited about them going that direction. The thing that I was going to say is, this is the first time that we've had goals brought to us. And, and if you've seen your council packet, what we realize is, in the normal process, the right time to bring these is after we set our two-year goals. And so, what, going forward, and next year would be the next time that we do our two-year goals, is that we would set two-year goals, and then we would look at two-year goals for the commission's committees. So, and that would be the time that had come to make sure that they're in sequence with the goals that, as a council has set for the, for, for the work of the city. So, that, are there any, I'm not hearing any edits. I'm hearing definitely people feel that they're, you know, there's visionary, they're thinking about their specific areas, and we appreciate that. I'd, with that, I entertain a motion, if someone wanted to make a motion to approve these, if there's no other questions.
Can we discuss it first?
Oh, that's what we've been, okay. So, with that discussion, well, we need, we'd need a motion in order to go into the discussion. So...
I'm...
Councilmember Fagerin?
I move to approve the Environmental Resilience Commission and Historic Preservation Commission 2025 Goals and Objectives.
Second.
Second. And with that, into discussion, so Councilmember Gaither?
I understand that these goals may seem ambitious or even challenging, especially in today's political climate. But as Councilmember Fagerin stated, maybe ambition is what we need right now when we think about our climate and our environment. I think these goals speak to what our community values most, which is really preserving Pullman's unique character, enhancing environmental sustainability, and ensuring representation for all of our opportunity, and representation for all of our residents. So, I just want to put that out there. I don't know where I stand yet, but I, I do, I do want to, I just wanted to share that.
Right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you very much, RJ. And with that, we have no other business before us, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.